I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Licensing Commissioners for the Town of North Andover from Monday, September 26th at 7:00 PM. Pledge of Allegiance will begin our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I saw her in the hallway. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from our September 14th meeting.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes as written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right into our communications and announcements. This evening, we have very special recognition of one of our men in blue, one of our finest, Sergeant Daniel Lannan. He's being recognized this evening by the Board for his actions on September 11th of this year, where he administered Narcan to a woman suffering from an opiate overdose, thus saving her life. I would like to introduce and call up Representative Jim... James Lyons. Jim Lyons, it says James, that threw me, but...
Only his mother called.
Right, that threw me a little bit.
Very much. Chairman, Mr. Lannan, if you could join me up here, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, well, Mr. Lannan, as many of the people in this room know that you have been called many names. But tonight, Mr. Lannan, Sergeant Lannan, we're going to call you a hero for what you did on September the 11th. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the House of Representatives, be it hereby known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its most sincerest congratulations to Sergeant Daniel Lannan in recognition of your act of heroism on September 11th, 2015, wherein you saved the life of a young woman through the swift administration of Narcan and emergency first aid while off duty. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good... future good fortune and continued success, giving this the 28th day of September at the State House, signed by Robert A. DeLeo, Representative Lyons, and Representative DiZoglio. Daniel, it is my pleasure and honor to give you this award.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Daniel, we also... The Governor of the Commonwealth also sends along...
A check?
No, these are the other things people call you. The Governor of the Commonwealth also sends you his very best in a citation from him and the Lieutenant Governor.
Thank you.
All right, Daniel. Thank you very much, Sergeant.
On behalf of the Town of North Andover, we would like to recognize you, Sergeant Lannan, as well for your actions on September 11th at the North Andover Mall, where you noticed a woman suffering from an opiate overdose and administered Narcan. Were it not for your quick thinking and immediate actions, the outcome would have been far more serious. The North Andover Board of Selectmen commend you for your immediate response, your knowledge and willingness to assist people in distress. You are a credit to yourself, the North Andover Police Department, and the community as a whole. Thank you on behalf of the Town of North Andover, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No speech?
Okay. Thank you, Dan. We're going to skip. So, next up, we are actually going to bring up Chris McClure, our Director of IT.
So, if you may recall, sorry for the background noise, if you may recall, a couple of meetings, actually, we've talked about two things, finding ways to enhance the website and finding ways for residents to be able to report various issues around town. Both Selectmen Valencourt and Selectmen Smidely raised... both supported and raised some additional questions or some areas of interest. One was to make sure that we electronically can communicate with residents, as we had been in the past. And the second is to try to find a way that folks who came to our website but may not carry a portable device could find a way to communicate with us. With the help of Chris, Chris has been here a couple of months, I can tell you his involvement, his hire, his engagement in the community has been transformative already for those who work in this building and in surrounding buildings. He has impacted our lives, sometimes rather quickly, and so we have to slow him down a little bit, but I think we all recognize the benefit he brings. And one of those is to take... make some changes to the website and how we deal and interact with residents. So, Chris is going to update you on a few changes that were made.
Thank you, Andrew. So, to Andrew's point, we've been working on quite a few things behind the scenes, but my favorite technology are always the ones that we can bring forward to show a benefit to the community. In this case, the town had been using a product through the Commonwealth Connect Grant called C Click Fix that had a small degree of success, but it had some limitations, namely being that it was primarily mobile and that it affected primarily Public Works and a small handful of departments and wasn't incorporated into our day-to-day workflow. That app also had a small mobile app component to it, so under Andrew's direction through the Board of Selectmen, we tried to make it easier and encourage residents to report actionable items through the website. So now there's a big action button on the homepage that says "Report It." This will be the same through our mobile app, which we'll talk about in a second. Andrew, if you want to call that up. I'm glad that worked, because this was the first time we tested it right here. So what we encourage people to do is to report those items, potholes, graffiti, problems with the website, et cetera, that we can track and take action on. And for those more general questions, to use the website for email feedback and other things. But this affects multiple departments, it's centrally tracked, it feeds into a bigger system that we're now using called PeopleForms that's available to all departments, including the school and public safety, and we're starting really to delve into that. So in addition to a standardized reporting tool, it allows us to look at all that information, share it centrally, and on the back end, there's some very powerful mapping and dashboard components that allow us to see what's going on in town and allows Andrew to see for the types of issues that are being reported, how many are being reported, how long it's taking them to be resolved, where in town they're being reported, as opposed to searching through different emails. We have a database now that this is feeding to inform decisions in the future. So we tried to make it as easy to use for the public as possible. Very simple form, when you submit it, it goes to the appropriate department, who then will start working and resolving it. And it is available via the mobile app. In addition to this form on the website on the left, you'll notice a new "Connect With Us" tab that has all our social media links and also links to our mobile app, which is available for Android, iPhone, and on any mobile device using an HTML5 interface.
So one of the things that we've said was the first three to four years was really a focus on the financial fundamentals and making sure that we were sustainable. What we focused on next, or turned the corner a little bit, not that we don't... that we lose focus of the financial side, was indicating that we really needed to start gathering data to justify, not what we do on a daily basis, but really be able to explain not only expenditures but service levels. Our ability to look at a map or look at data and say, "Look at all the services we're providing." I think we do a tremendous job here, the departments are fantastic. It sometimes becomes difficult, though, to say, "We've provided this level of service on this many occasions in this neighborhood." It's the change, it's really where we're forward-looking over the next three to five years to develop the matrices necessary. We envision a day where you walk into the Town Manager's office and there will, in essence, be a live map that's showing us where we're receiving calls about potholes, where we're receiving calls about trash issues and graffiti, and allow us to, on an ongoing basis, watch the problems come in and be resolved. We know our staff is doing it, we're very supportive, but it's difficult to communicate without that kind of data. So we're transforming to that day. This is the beginning of that. Again, Chris has been the primary point person, but I can tell you, we attended a meeting on this particular website change, this reported piece that's been in the works now for about six weeks, and we had 40 managers in the room, or 40 managers and assistant managers in the room interested in participating. We see it also as a way to report on ourselves in a positive way. If we see something happening that affects another department, we can go online and add that. For those folks, as Chris identified, you go on, whether you have an iPhone or an Android device, download a very powerful North Andover app. You can load it on your phone this evening. Provides you the ability not only to report it, as we do here in the same methodology, but also provides other useful information about meetings, standard documents that we keep online. It really is a powerful tool, represents the community well. So we're really looking forward to this. We encourage residents to provide us feedback and to allow us to help you better, and then it allows us to track that and provide the kind of interaction that residents today expect, quite frankly.
Now, when does it go live?
It's live right now.
Oh, right now?
Just it?
Oh.
This is the launch.
Six weeks from ideation to go live is pretty amazing, so congratulations on that. And I also like the fact that it has a much broader category of items that can be selected as opposed to whether C Click Fix or the Legacy App.
Right.
So there's a much broader category of things that can be reported. And so, great, congratulations. That's awesome that it's out that quickly.
Thank you.
Before you go, I just want to give you a shout-out. Stan Lambert, 43 Stone, Cleve Road, and a member of the North Andover School Committee, I wanted to come up quickly, because Ray said there would be a two-month moratorium starting in October for personal public comments, so I wanted to get this in quickly while there's still a window of opportunity. I just wanted to say how much we've appreciated. I personally have appreciated, and we, the school department, have appreciated Chris McClure's arrival here. He's been a joy to work with, he's been very helpful and innovative, and really helped promote things that we have been working on now for some time, and really helped us on the school side really increment up our technology in a dramatic sort of way. Not only his help, but the help that the town's given us in the last four or five years for funding and some things we've been able to do to improve our infrastructure has, most amazing to me, put us in a place where we now, I think, have some of the best school technology of any town around here. We're doing better, we have better Internet access, we have better networks, we're just in a great spot. And so I wanted to personally thank Chris for all the great work he's doing, and I'm sure he's going to be doing more, but we really look forward to that. Everybody's enjoyed working with him, and I'm sure they'll continue to do that, so thanks. Thank you.
I didn't get to the detail of going through the whole form, it would bore folks, but they can see, one of the more powerful tools is you can actually identify a particular street. Every street is preloaded, every street address is preloaded. If you see something, it's not at your particular home, it sees something along the way, you can find that, and automatically identifies it on a map. It will provide us that data across the community, it can be everything. We're going to use it internally to provide feedback on the fire department relative to the status of fire hydrants or certain call data. So we see this as really a jumping-off point, and I think Dick is certainly correct, to get from sort of zero to 60 in six weeks is a testament of Chris's skill and cooperation from everybody involved, quite frankly.
So, Andrew, what's the plan for rolling it out to the public, then? Is there going to be some kind of an advertising or some kind of adoption?
So, yeah, definitely. So I've been working very closely with Brian Fraser with NCAM as well, and we've got an episode planned and some other marketing things planned around that. Generally, I prefer kind of a soft rollout, so that we can, you know, make sure that it's working and sort of get buy-in. I think to Andrew's point, too, we've really focused internally on making sure that department heads are aware. We had a very productive meeting with the DPW last week, just making sure that every person responding to this form knows what's expected and knows how to use it. So internally, there's been a lot of work making sure that we're prepared to process, because making the form, I mean honestly, is fairly easy. It's making sure that all those backend connections and that we can process it effectively internally. I think that we've done a good job. And so the plan is, this is the launch, we're going to put out a press release and a social media blast and a web alert, just letting people know, and then do some media, and then just really start pushing that. And I think one of Andrew's ideas as well is for those people that may not have traditionally used a form when people call in, we've been training the staff to take the phone call and log that call into the system, so that we're capturing everything we do and not just the people that use this form, and slowly guide people into knowing about the form and using it when they can, but also getting better about logging those things that may get lost.
You certainly can't miss it when you go onto the homepage of the website. I saw it today, and I said to the Town Manager, "Wow, that looks great." And I knew it wasn't working earlier today, but now it is. Great.
To foreshadow sort of next steps, we get a lot of things going on. I know that we've spent some time talking in the past about some of the software developments outside of PeopleForms and the different things going on, and making a financial software conversion, that's been underway for six months. We're doing a permitting conversion into a new permit tracking process, so that residents and staff can track what's happening in the land use board. So there's a number of different things going on. We had a really interesting conversation today that I think eventually will lead us to adding video welcome messages and video components to the website for opportunities of people who visit our website to get an introduction, a video introduction, you know, "Welcome to North Andover," focusing a little heavily on commercial development and business development. And so folks, along again with Chris's help and Brian Fraser from North Andover CAM, to add more video content. Some folks just, quite frankly, like to go on and watch a 30-second or a minute video rather than sort of trying to get through the website. So there are some additional enhancements coming that we think will help in the long term, but certainly with Chris's help, we've taken a lot of significant steps.
That's great. Impressive, yay. It's going to be a wonderful tool.
Let you know how it goes.
I hope you hold my credit.
The default is the Town Manager's email address, that's the default.
So, Chris, when is it planned for the domain change to northandovermass.gov?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We actually are coming in line with the schools and becoming a Google Apps organization, so that we can do some greater collaboration with the schools. And there's also a whole host of other benefits, we can talk about it at a later meeting. But the plan is to allow for the work needed around Munis, which is going live with payroll in January, that we're looking at launching that new platform like February 1st. So our plan is, we already own northandoverma.gov, which we're going to be branding. You can actually go to www.northandoverma.gov now, and it will take you to the town's webpage. The plan is to use those email addresses between now and February to allow staff to learn the new environment, and then as of February, first week of February or so, to launch that as the official town domain and email address.
We'll retain ownership of northandover.com, so that anybody who happens to root there, go there out of habit, automatically link to the dot.
Yeah, that'll be an alias forever, once we migrate, but...
As long as we keep it.
Yeah.
And I didn't mean to just take it away from reported, that's great. Don't say, "Hey, you finally get something, a success, and then someone says, 'Well, what's next?'"
What have you done for...
Well, it's good. It all ties into the broader strategy of... So they're all different pieces of it, but...
Have a great edition. Great. It's different when you have professional staff members, you know what I mean?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back into order, and we are going to... We have an introduction of a new staff member this evening. Kathy Davy, our HR Director.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Marie Petto. Marie Petto is the Community Service Officer for the Town of North Andover. She started on September 8th, and I know that she's been very busy. Tracy, I want you to take note of this, she has a Bachelor of Science degree from Salem State University.
There you go.
Ten years of experience as a veterinary technician. She's provided care and rehabilitation for exotic and domestic animals, in her prior experience in community outreach and education programs to teach the public how to safely coexist with animals. So this is Marie.
Hello, Marie, welcome to North Andover.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I hope I can provide great service to the community and everybody.
Well, I've already heard a few things, and they've been good, so I think you're off to a good start.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Can I, Madam Chairman, make a communication? The fire station is moving along. I had a great opportunity to get by there last week, it's just a great building, a fantastic space. We are tentatively planning a November 7th grand opening, which is a Saturday. We certainly believe that the building and its significance to the community is important enough to have the grand opening at a time where really can be an open house for the community. So the tentative plan right now is November 7th, which is a Saturday, grand opening, tour of the building, open house, really, with the expectation that I think the 8:00 AM crew on November 12th, these are soft dates right now, will be the first group to occupy the building, and we'll see as those dates evolve to see if they change. But right now, that's where we're headed, and it really looks great, and appreciate the support of the folks in the fire department who've been involved, and certainly Ray, who's been shepherding the project. But I think the community will be very proud of what they see in about a month.
That's great. Also fantastic. Next, under Communication and Announcements, is the Affordable Housing Trust partnership with Bread &amp; Roses and the Application Seminar for 6466 May Street, the first one, which are both three-bedroom, two-bath duplex, each side. The first seminar is tomorrow evening, here, in this room, at 6:00. There is also a second one on Tuesday, October 6th, at the Stevens Library. In order to be eligible for this particular property and opportunity, you must attend one of the two seminars, and you also have to income-qualify. All pertinent information will be given out at one of the two seminars. Again, attendance is required. But this is an opportunity for moderate to low-income folks who have a connection to North Andover to be able to purchase a home in North Andover. The current selling price, and it will stay, I shouldn't say current, the selling price of each side will be $175,000. So again, the Application Seminars, one tomorrow evening here in this room at the Selectmen's Meeting Room on Main Street at 6:00, and next Tuesday, October 6th, at the Stevens Library at 6:00 PM as well. More information on the website, should you need it. Any other communications and announcements?
Nice festival?
Yes.
It's very nice.
Successful festival, fifth successful festival at the merchants. Beautiful weather, and lots of people came out, it was great. Really good. Any other announcements, communications? No. Nothing. Moving on to consent items, then. First on the agenda this evening under Consent Items would be the proposal by the fire department to increase our ambulance rates.
Good evening.
A couple months back, I spoke with Mr. Mailer about raising, or potentially raising
the... or looking into raising the ambulance rates. We hadn't raised the ambulance rates in several years.
Five.
At which point, Mr. Mailer directed me to get all the pertinent information and come back before him, and then we could proceed to where we are tonight. I went back, and I talked to probably the preeminent EMS educator in the area, and we're lucky to have him, Jeff Tashane. Jeff put together this packet or this paper, which I'm sure the Board has. I'm sure, I would suspect you've looked at it. Because I've said all these nice things about Jeff, he has graciously agreed to be the one to answer any questions you may have. So, Jeffrey?
Thanks, Chief. Hello, good evening. So, it's been five years, as the Chief said, since the fire department has raised rates. Currently, right now, our rate is $804.61. That's for a BLS emergency, that's so as a result, someone calling 911. We arrive, we provide patient care, we treat them, we use our equipment, and then we transport them to the hospital of their choice, either Lawrence General, Holy Family, or Merrimack Valley Hospital. Those are the hospitals right now in our actual catchment area. As you can see on page two of the document, you'll see the different rates right now that are fixed rates by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, which is known as CMS. So those are contracted rates right now that the town has with CMS. So those rates are fixed, and those rates will not change unless the federal government actually comes out and allows us to increase them at that time. On the far-right-hand column, you'll see additional fees that we charge for. We charge for mileage, airway management, so if we had to assist someone with ventilations, put in an advanced airway, airway adjunct, use of the automatic external defibrillator, oxygen, and then there's four additional items there that other communities in our local area are charging for that we are currently not.
So, sorry, Jeff, you explain that middle column again, Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So is that what we're allowed to charge?
That's what we are allowed to charge for a person who has Medicare or Medicaid. Those are fixed rates, and those rates are set forth by the federal government.
Okay.
So even though we would use in excess of the $378.41, you know, in equipment, that's the most that we can actually bill for and that we're allowed to actually get reimbursed. You can see that in 2015, the federal government did allow us to have a 2% increase for the actual inflation factor.
So this, the discussion tonight, Jeff, is really whether or not we're going to raise the rates for people who have private insurance?
Correct, right. So it'd be private insurances such as Blue Cross Blue Shield, Tufts, you know, Commonwealth Care, other insurances like that. We actually spent some time with ComStar Ambulance Billing, who the town maintains a contract with. They actually get 3.5% of what they collect, not what they bill for, as a cost of them doing business for us. We actually had several discussions with them. A lot of this presentation actually comes from them. We met with them over several days and hours to allow you to have the best information to help make that decision tonight. If you look at page three, those are the actual definitions set forth by CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, about what a BLS emergency rate is, a basic life support, non-emergency is, advanced life support, advanced life support 1, advanced life support 2. The town maintains an actual affiliation agreement with Lawrence General Hospital to provide advanced life support. We have since added two additional services, should Lawrence General Hospital not be available, because we want to ensure the residents of the town the best possible care that we can provide them. So we have a backup affiliation agreement with Middleton Fire Department, who provides advanced life support, and we also have a backup agreement with Patriot Ambulance, who would respond from Lawrence into town here, should again Lawrence General Hospital not be available. Any other questions?
So because this is only raising rates on fewer than half of the individuals, based on the 2014 numbers, who use our service, if we were to improve the increase as you asked for, how much additional revenue do you estimate that would generate?
So if we're looking at raising the rates, and we suggested, based upon the inflation factor over the past five years, as well as the cost of doing business, we're looking at a 20% increase that would bring up the BLS emergency rate to $965.53.
So how much total, though, do you anticipate more that generating total for next...
Right, so if we go based upon the 2014 numbers that are presented to you, we're looking at roughly an additional $96,000 that would come into the town. There's actually several other communities in the area that charge for services that we currently don't. You can see on the top of page five, the actual medications that we actually administer now. We can administer BLS albuterol nebulizers to our patients, we administer the use of intranasal Narcan, which we've probably administered since we put it into service last March, we've probably administered it probably 38 times. The sodium chloride, which we actually mix with the albuterol to change the concentration for a pediatric dose, oral insulin glucose for a diabetic emergency, aspirin is part of our chest pain protocol now, which we're authorized to administer, and then we have EpiPen juniors and EpiPen adults, which are for patients experiencing severe allergic reactions. There's communities that actually charge for that, we currently don't charge for that. That actually comes out of the Fire Department Ambulance Supply Fund.
What I've said, for me, the only thing that I would... that I see with this is that I think that we should probably review this and increase more often, where we waited five years, and I understand the reasoning, I've been on the Board those five years, I get that, and now we're looking at a 20% increase, and maybe we just need to be more aggressive every year about it. I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at an EpiPen at $420, or $210 for one.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's craziness.
Right. When we started administering Narcan last March, we were paying roughly $23 a dose, but because of the demand right now, we're paying $44.99 per dose that we administer.
And you administer 38 since March.
Well, that's... We've had interactions with 38 patients that we've administered. It may be one dose, it may be two doses.
Oh, right, okay, so it could be... it could be interesting. Interesting, yeah.
Does anybody know what the rate was in 1991?
For Narcan? I don't think it was.
No, for ambulance fees? 19...
Oh, I do recall free.
It is, knowing that, it is, you know, being on this side of the desk.
Sure, I understand.
It is, it's hard to see these numbers, but it is what it is. It's good that we aren't charging for everything. We could go into a whole debate as to how one group gets charged this, but that's the whole healthcare thing, we'll be here all night, and none of us will agree.
Absolutely.
But we have...
It is, knowing that, it is, it's, you know, being on this side of the desk.
Sure, I understand.
It is, it's hard to see these numbers, but it is what it is. It's good that we aren't charging for everything. We could go into a whole debate as to how one group gets charged this, but that's the whole healthcare thing, we'll be here all night, and none of us will agree.
Absolutely.
But we have, we have a good ambulance service.
You have great DMTs here.
I know, we hear it all the time.
Oh, incredible. I don't want, God forbid, anyone else showing up.
No, they, they.
Myself and my family.
They do a great job.
Yes, they do.
There's no question about it. But we certainly would be open to any other ways that we could perhaps save money or make it more efficient, but I seem as though you've probably already done your homework in that regard.
We've, we've done our homework. You know, the chief's right now in the process of beginning to spec out a brand-new ambulance under the capital improvement plan. We're trying to be fiscally responsible there and trying to stay within that budget. We met with Stryker Stretcher today, who's going to be providing some of the equipment for that ambulance. So with the deputy and the chief, I mean, we're trying to be creative, you know, but also we want to charge for the services that we actually provide.
Well, it's, obviously, it's a life and death thing, it's a quality of life thing that we need to support our citizens with, and, you know, many times, they only have one run, and it's to get them to the hospital and then, so.
So there is like a gap in collections for some of the insured. You know, I understand no insurance, that's going to be a tough one to try to collect from, but there's a gap, like for other insurance, 86.4% are uncollectible or are collected. So is there anything we can do to try to collect those additional? I mean, that's obviously.
So we actually just, as I said earlier, we met with ComStar Ambulance Billing, and the chief has requested now monthly reports, so that we can actually view what are considered bad debts and the town would be writing off. And we want to also make sure that it's not something on our behalf, that maybe at the time, the patient was, I'll consider to be an express pack. We didn't know their name, their date of birth, or anything, and we weren't able to bill for those services at that time, if it's a John Doe. So it's incumbent upon us to be proactive, to go back and actually get that information. So I'm working with Deputy McCarthy right now to try to implement something that, like that. So if we have a John Doe, or we have an express pack, A, B, C, D, whatever, that there's a mechanism in place that we can go back and get that information. So hopefully, we can see some of those no insured calls actually be billed, whether it be at, you know, a Blue Cross, you know, Tufts, Hobbit Pilgrim rate, or whether it be just under CMS, which is the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services.
And of course, with that, there's more of an administration cost for your time and everything else.
Absolutely, there is.
So it's almost an offset there, so.
Two things, the obvious, which is this is a service, it's not a business, right? And the town's never operated as a business, it's operated as a service. We certainly don't want to buoy with too many numbers, but that's evident. Even the rates today are not business-oriented, this isn't an enterprise fund or a for-profit business, this is, we're covering reasonable costs of really experienced and skilled folks trying to deliver a high-quality service. And I think a number of steps were taken, certainly the chief, in fairness to the chief and his staff. The chief probably came to me a couple of months ago, but that preceded four different times he came to me in the preceding four years, so the 20% may be a little bit of a reflection of me carrying back a sentiment that we really needed to be cautious about increasing rates. But certainly, given the context and the rising costs of everything that the PD does, you know, one ambulance is $250,000 or $275,000, and the cost of these medication increases, Medicare increases, it's deductibility or its allowable ability, it rates at either 0, 1%, or 2%. Our costs escalate faster. Just the increase in fuel alone, running an ambulance, went from, you know, I don't know how long ago, but $1.85 to $3. something and back down. So the costs are escalating at particularly great rates, and it is expensive to run these services. But I think the board and previous boards have always taken the view, this is a service, and it's not a business, but at the same time, we're raising costs slower than our costs are actually increasing, and I think that's an indication of this board's view that we need to find a way to balance this, and I think this represents a reasonable balance.
Absolutely, yes.
And they deserve, that's what government is for, is for things such as this, so.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Do I have a motion or any further discussion?
So you need, you need a motion on this?
Well, I think you could just fill in as presented.
Are you motioning? Did you start the motion?
Well, I'm just looking to see what, let me just see.
You could do it by percentage, if it makes it easier. Rather than identifying the rates. Since there's been a recommendation on page five as a percentage, I think if you did it as a percentage, we can work with that.
Okay.
The question would be under bullet point 2 on five. Would there be an appetite to deal with at some level, even an entry level, to deal with some of the services which aren't currently covered?
No.
Okay, and that's, so the board would really need to identify those two points in any motion.
Okay, so the move the board of selectmen, increase the basic life emergency ambulance billing rate by 20%. Fees to be determined based on that percentage, and that the additional, or the, so we're going to exclude, or continue to exclude those medications, is that what?
Yeah. So we can silence on the motion. We can, we can fill in.
Okay, so the motion will be to increase the rates by the 20% as proposed by the North Andover Fire Department and their representatives, and to fill the fees in appropriately to match that percentage.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Traveler, I abstain.
And one extension. Understandable. Passes. On to, what?
Four, nothing.
Four, nothing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, four, zero, yes, sorry, Don, I don't, sorry. I abstained. Requested surplus fire equipment.
The fire chief has respectfully requested the surplus of certain fire equipment, I support the request.
May I ask which third-world country will?
Well, I'm not sure which third-world country, but let me fill in the blanks on this equipment. This is a turnout gear that, coat and bunker pants that currently resides in the basement of, via headquarters. It's too old to use either for the active firefighters that are here, or for the ones that are going to the fire academy. Turnout gear, according to National Fire Protection Agency standards, has a shelf-life of 10 years. That's why the town manager and I and the union have agreed to every, every year to buy so many sets of turnout gear, so that no firefighter will have turnout gear older than six years. So having said that, the gear in the basement is sufficiently older than 10 years, rather than have it thrown out in the dumpster when they start taking apart the station. I did this back in 2010, Tracy may remember.
I do.
We brokered through a New York Fire Department.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And it went over to, I'm not sure where exactly it went, but I was told by the New York Fire Department that over there, they basically go into a fire with their dungarees and T-shirt.
Right, so anything.
So anything we can give them, it's a plus, it's a plus for us, we look good, they'll have something, they'll think it's quite special. So that's why you, that's why I'm before you tonight, asking to be able to do this.
What happens to this gear? Does it break down? Does it, does like the material break down?
I think what happens is, over the years, so many, so many fires, that's why now, if you have, if any type of fire you have now, they recommend you come back to the station and you put your gear in the extractor, you clean your gear.
Yeah.
Because you may not think anything's gotten on the gear, but smoke or other particles may have gotten on the gear, which could cause, potentially cause cancer or anything like that, so, so that's why I'm before you.
So you'll broker through that new?
Yes, well, I brokered this time actually through a third person who actually does my EMS education, an outside vendor, he can actually do the, in other words, they don't have to come from New York this time, they can go more local. Thank you.
Madam Chair, move that the board of selectmen.
Approve the request of Fire Chief Andrew Malnikos to surplus 10 turnout coats and 20 bunker pants per his memorandum to the town manager dated September 18th, 2015.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's all about the fire department tonight. We have a, right? We have a request, next on the agenda is a request from Dan Paz, from local 2035 the North Andover Firefighters Union, to use the rotary at the old center on Saturday, October 10th, to fill the boot. It's a great drive.
How you guys doing this evening?
How are you?
Good. My name's Dan Paz, obviously I'm North Andover Firefighters, the local president. I come before you guys this evening to ask if you're permission to run the fill-the-boot campaign. That's, basically goes all towards the MDA. We've done things like this in the past, more notably, we've done like a, like a dunk tank at the, at the Calum on the 4th of July, but the guy that used to run it has since transferred out, and we haven't really done anything for the MDA in a couple of years, so.
The volunteer.
I know.
The other piece of it.
You know, they want, but they just want to.
So we're, we're just, we're looking for your approval to run this campaign Saturday, October 10th, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, at the rotary in the old center. It seemed like the safest place to do it, where that's, traffic's a lot slower, and we could actually stand up in the raised medians, or kind of out of the road, but.
Madam Chair.
Yes, most definitely.
Second?
Second.
There we go.
Familiar site.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, approval of the preservation restriction agreement for the Samuel Osgood House is up next. Thank you. To the fire department. So he just left. So just for the viewing audience, we, the board, are being asked to approve the preservation restrictions that are being placed on the Samuel Osgood House at 440 Osgood Street in order to make the restrictions perpetual. The North Andover Historical Commission has voted to approve the preservation plan for the Samuel Osgood House, and recommends that the board approves this, so tonight we shall hear.
Well, I'm Joe Cornish from Historic New England. Historic New England is a not-for-profit organization, and we hold preservation restrictions, preservation easements on 98 properties, and four of those are located in North Andover. You may remember, some of you, last summer I was here to look for, to request approval from the Board of Selectmen for 140 Academy Road, which is the Stevens House. We've been working with Mr. and Mrs. Arthur Larson, Martha Larson is here. They've owned this house since 1972. It was built in 1740 by Captain Peter Osgood, and his son Samuel, who the house is named for, had quite an ambitious career. He was the first postmaster general here in the United States. The house is being sold tomorrow, and our preservation restriction will prevent major changes from taking place without our review and approval at the exterior and interior of the house.
Okay.
I should add that the town will have no responsibility for this preservation restriction. The reason we're here, the way the law is written, in order for the document to be perpetual and binding on all future owners, we have to have the approval of the town and the Massachusetts Historic Commission.
So the property being sold tomorrow?
Yes.
Was the current buyer aware that this was going to happen?
Yes, yes.
I mean, just, I know, well, that's my question, right? All of a sudden, we throw a restriction on someone that's passing papers tomorrow.
Well, I guess I'd like to say thank you to the Larsons and the new owners who are willing to take this endeavor on, and good for them, and it's great for the town, it's great for history, I mean, there's a lot of good things, but it's, you know, not everyone is willing to do that, so thank you for that.
Well, everyone has assumed since we've owned it that it was on some sort of restriction, that they would say, oh, well, you can't do anything, oh, yes, you can, up until now. So I think that we are protecting the pretty most significant historical parts of the house. It's not as restrictive as some easements could be. They, they can fix it, they can change the kitchen, they can fix the bathrooms.
Can they change the color of the front door, or we like the back bay?
No, 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 paint colors are not protected in this particular.
That's right. So it's the paneling and the historic.
Fireplaces.
Fireplaces.
It's all good.
Joe had a lot of fun going through the house. Any questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A lot of the most.
Yes, in preserving. I didn't know that Samuel Osgood was the first postmaster. How did I not know that? I don't, I shouldn't say that out loud, because now I should be embarrassed that I didn't know that. Should have probably kept that one to myself.
Brian's typing away over there. Didn't know.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I'm like, how did I not know that? Maybe I did, and it's one of the many things I've forgotten.
We have so many other great things in the town, like.
There are so many wonderful things. But that's one that should kind of stick with me a little bit.
One wonderful thing is that button, if you press it, the microphone.
So I should have never said that out loud. Next on the agenda is the affordable unit resale at Two Harvest Drive.
Move approval?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Columbia Gas, Massachusetts, requests to excavate 2 Marva Ridge Road to install new gas service.
Have Columbia here?
No, they don't come, they're private.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to move into licensing?
Chair, I move that we change into licensing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in licensing.
Okay, we are now in licensing. So first off, we have a number of requests from Merrimack College, I believe. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. No, I'm sorry. First up is a change of manager request for Edgewood Retirement Community. Do we have anybody from Edgewood? We do, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Lou D'Angelo, I'm the Culinary Service Director at Edgewood Retirement Community, and we're looking to change the liquor license manager from Marlene Rotering, who's the executive director, to myself, the Culinary Service Director. So that's what we're looking to do. We followed through with all the paperwork with the state and fees involved.
Okay.
It almost seems a little silly, but have you, are you tip-certified?
Yes, yeah.
You never know.
You never know, no.
That is a first.
Yeah.
It appears all the paperwork has been filed and is in order. I don't see any issues with it. Any other questions from the?
Move approval, and delighted that they're still enjoying life and a good glass of wine every night.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, it's a great place.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next up is a change of the board of directors for VFW Post 2104. Mr. Lynch.
I am Joe Lynch, representing the Club 2104 Board of Directors. When we applied for the alterations of the premises, our board of directors didn't line up for what the ABCC had on file, so in essence, they required us to make sure everything was current, and that's what we have in front of you right now.
Okay, so it's just an update of your?
Right, the only officer that has changed since the original application is Todd Cochran Head, resigned due to the fact that he lives out in Auburn, Mass., and he wasn't really making the meetings, so, other than that, everything's the same.
So it's a procedural, just to update the records?
Correct.
Okay.
That the Board of Selectmen Acting as Licensing Commissioner has approved the change of board of directors as presented for Club 2104, the VFW.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is a number of requests from the, from Merrimack College, Marv Lent from Merrimack College, I don't believe somebody is here representing tonight. We have a one-day-all alcohol license for the onstage-as-cap-raise performance. We have a number of wine and malt licenses, I won't go through each one of these unless we want to read them all into the record. There are in total 13 requests, most of them all centered around the Rogers Center for performances that will be done there, all the way going through December 4th.
Move that the Board of Selectmen Acting as Licensing Commissioner has approved the two one-day-all alcohol license requests and the 11 one-day wine and malt license requests from Merrimack College for events on October 10th, 16, 17, 22, 23, 24, 25, 29, 30, 31, November 6th, December 4th, as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a motion to?
Move out of licensing.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're out of licensing, and we're back to our general meeting.
We have no old business. This evening, we have new business, which will, is the Osgood Solar Application.
It'll be a moment.
Okay. And any public comment prior? No, I don't want to go out of order on that, in case there is a public comment after.
Could you just kind of fill everybody in and the audience as to what the proceedings are tonight for this?
This is a requirement under the review of the planning board that, that certain boards and other parties provide a review. The term would be review of this particular project. I provided you a copy of the cover letter from Gene Enright, Assistant Director of Community Development, along with the plans provided by the proposed developer of, of the solar installation at Osgood Landing. And it made most sense, based upon conversations with Sleipman Watson, that that review take place in a public environment, since it'd be difficult for you folks to complete that review unless you did it one at a time and then provided individual comments. So communicated with Mr. Leary, he can identify himself shortly. I can communicate with Mr. Leary that it made most sense for that review to take place at a selectmen's meeting and therefore you're here tonight to hear Mr. Leary and anyone else here as present on behalf of the project. Then ultimately you have to decide how you will complete that review, whether that's through the form of a vote on a common approved letter, because any letter from the board would require a majority vote of the board, or quite frankly, listen and not provide any formal response. So, so the board has some leeway in terms of how that review would be interpreted, that review, whether it's no comment or something in writing or something in between, will ultimately be provided to
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Mailer and everyone else in the audience. My name is Dan Leary and I'm providing development support to the owners of Osgood Solar LLC. And I believe there's a presentation. I just, it's on.
Are you wanting to, can I give that for you?
Sure.
One sec. Be with me one second.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You got a prayer.
So while it's, while it's coming up, I'll just get started with the first slide because I, I think you can see the first slide up. So we're proposing to develop a six-megawatt project, solar, a solar facility at Osgood Landing, and we're going to offer the energy credits back to the town if the town chooses to, to purchase them at a discount. So this is a project about a large solar array at Osgood Landing with the potential, if the town chooses, to benefit financially from the purchase of the energy from it. The property actually has a very important role in the history of, of clean energy, both its history and in, and in the future. Actually, in two thousand eight, Osgood Landing was the home of the largest privately-owned solar array in the state. And a lot of people didn't know that, but there actually is a very large solar array already on the roof of this building. And it was put there in two thousand eight. And it's actually home right now to, it has been the headquarters to several clean energy companies. One of the largest that's in, in the facility right now is, is Panelclaw, which makes the mounting components for solar projects. So when you put a, when you put a solar project on a commercial flat roof, this is the, these are the components that hold the panels onto the roof. And right now in North America, this, this company that is located in, in the property, about one out of five large commercial flat roofs is, is done by this company right here in North Andover. So, so there's been a, quite, quite a history of, of projects and companies that go along with the site. And these projects are common around the region. You see them more and more at premier properties. And what we wanted to talk about tonight is how this will deliver value to all the, to the parties involved. But there is a, sort of a, a time-limited opportunity to this. So the intent of my presentation is to be very short and concise, so we can answer any questions that you might have about the, the project as we go. So if you could go to the third slide, please, Mr. Mailer? So, so on that, on that slide, you can probably see the, the rendering of what the project would look like from, that's, that's about where the, the gas station is, right across the street from the, the south entrance. So as we go down to the third slide, with all the processing power of the computer, what, what you'll see is an aerial view that shows the existing solar project as well as the new solar project. As we get there, I'll first just orient you to the site, so you can see the, the scale of what we're talking about. So on the right-hand side of this aerial view, you'll see Route one-twenty-five in, in the black outline. And then just over to the left, you'll see the front parking lot where you'll, you'll, everybody parks as they're coming in to visit the building. And that first area on the left there is actually the, the, the building that you see from the street that's got all the, the green on it, or the blue. So blue represents the new solar that we're proposing. And just by comparison, the green that's in the middle of the large building represents the existing solar array that's, that's been up there since two thousand eight. The main portions of this project are really split up into two types of solar. One is what's mounted on the rooftop, which is a, a, a very low-profile mounting system that's essentially flat. And the second is carport canopies, which are shown on the, the south side, which is to the, to the bottom of the picture, to the west, on the left, and up, and a little bit up to the north in that small sliver right outside the, in, in the north parking, parking area. Before I move on, are there any questions about the orientation?
Because it's a little difficult to kind of differentiate between the colors. So the green panels are this, it's kind of a small patch of green on the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, in the?
Those are existing on the building.
Existing. So the, the blue that appears to run in front of the building, is that in front of the building or?
On the rooftop.
On the rooftop. That's what I wanted to be clear. So that's the proposed.
The parking lot in the front of the building.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to see that. So that's the proposed.
The blue with the black, oh, with the carports. The blue without any outline, it's dark and green is existing.
Okay.
So the carports basically go right to the property line on the, what I would guess is the?
The building part.
The north end of a side of the building. It goes?
This goes, the property goes all the way up to Holt Road.
Oh, okay, so that black line is?
These folks and these folks at home. So let, we'll, I'll try to replicate what you're saying, okay? Because I don't have a pointer. So, so the north side of the lot is on the north side of the screen, right? Top side of the screen?
At the top of the screen.
Right. The south is on the lower side?
Yes.
This is, this is a separate parcel, which is part of ownership of this particular group that actually faces Holt Road as well, goes all the way to Holt Road, right?
Correct.
This is the riverside, what is now the back of the building, that's Route one-twenty-five.
Correct.
This, this frame pointed to is actually rooftop proposed mount?
Right.
Doc green is existing solar. These darker shaded areas, the three of them are?
Carport canopies.
Carport canopies.
Okay. So the, so the building, or the property line extends beyond that black line
there, what we see?
Property is beyond the screen.
Okay.
All the way to Holt Road.
So under the?
See the edge of the, the property line of, so the property is owned, it's titled in three Ds. It's actually one D, but it's three tax parcels. One is the residential parcel under forty R, which is up and off the screen.
It's currently used as?
Thirty, well, thirty-some odd acres. The other is an eleven-acre parcel that is up on Holt Road that is entirely off of the screen, other than, see that small triangle? That's the beginning of a line that goes this way and there's eleven more acres. So when you mentioned that the edge of the screen was the edge of this lot, it actually isn't that more of the tree, the green, is actually part of the main parcel.
And is that the commercial piece of the forty R?
So the forty R commercial goes all the way through the eleven-acre Holt Road parcel all the way up to Holt Road.
Mixed use sits on the north side, Dick, from, from the north side of the parcel toward the residential. So the mixed use connects, in essence, the residential, it's thirty-one acres, to the mixed use coming down into the commercial section. The commercial is a hundred and twenty-five acres. All in, it's about a hundred and seventy, seventy acres.
One sixty-seven point four.
Correct.
And how much of the acreage would be covered by the carports?
So this is about eleven acres of, of all that would be covered with solar, about eight, seven point something is covered with the carports.
May I ask?
Small percentage of overall property.
Oh, percentage of property, we, I have that on a, it's, it's?
Hundred and sixty-seven acres, so about eleven acres, so always.
Three.
Yeah, it's a small percentage of the overall property.
And, and I'll, I just identify Michael Rosen as the counsel on the project and professional land orientation officer for the project as well.
I don't know if this is the right time for this question, but?
Yes, ma'am.
And if it is, well, I can, I can certainly wait. Well, is there a reason that you're not using more of the roof? There seems to be so much more roof space.
That's a great question.
Is this the right time?
Um, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I'll cover some of these things a little bit more later, but to answer that question specifically is, we're, we're going to endeavor to put in as much as feasible on the roof. The, the rooftop project is the best economics for the project. It, it's, it's probably obvious to you. After that, we're going to move anything that can't be on the roof to the ground. So that's, that's where the current proposal is that's in front of the planning board right now, is to utilize just, just over two megawatts of roof space and, and just under four megawatts on the ground.
So would that mean that you would potentially cut back some of the land space if you got more roof space, or would it just be in addition to this first-run proposal of the roof space?
So there's, the, the total opportunity is six megawatts that can be built on site. We can't exceed that by, by, by law.
Okay.
So our objective is to build six megawatts, which is about nineteen thousand solar panels. And the more we can fit on the roof, the better. But there's limitations to what's feasible to put on the roof, which is why we had to, so anything that it's not put on the ground can go on the roof and, and vice versa.
Dan, why don't you go into some detail? Because limitations does not, does not help, I think, to the discussion. Explain the limitations. Financial limitations, structural limitations, project cash flow limitations. Describe limitations. I think that's where celebrities.
I guess what I just don't want to be given the impression that we're going to really try to put as much on there, when we already know that might not be very much more that can be added. It's kind of, I think that's what you're asking and I'm sort of asking. So, yeah.
So we, the, the limitations are physical. Limitations, they have to do with how much usable space is up there. There's a lot of equipment and, and things that are up there that support the buildings. We have to work around that. There's structural limitations. The, the building was constructed in the mid-nineteen fifties. It's like ten building codes ago. So as we change, as we change the uses and things, we have to be consciously aware of, of how, how we're going to, to, to meet the, the current building code and the future needs of the, of the property. So, so we, we weigh all that. It's, it includes roofing, is a, is a consideration of that. It, there, there's a number of factors. But the, the reason why we've shown it on these two, two buildings specifically, the, the front of the building, which is building twenty and twenty-one, which is the, it sort of looks like a, like a golf driver on the right-hand side of that, like a one wood maybe. That is administrative space. It's great administrative space. And, and there's a nice, clean, open roof that we can utilize there. A lot of it's occupied. On the, on the western side is what we call Building Seventy, which is currently a, a, a large warehouse, just about entirely occupied. And also with a, a large open space. So, so the intent of building on those types of roof, in particular, Building Seventy, it needs, it needs a new roof. So, so refurbishing the roof is part of the project. You know, it's, it's, it's part of bringing, not just solar to the roof, but bringing new life to the building.
So is what we are seeing before us, I'm confused. So, and I say that because I feel like it's a kind of mixed messages. Is what we're seeing before us the actual project that will take place? Because I hear, well, there may be more on the roof or less on the roof or more. So is this what it will be, or no?
Yes, ma'am. This is what it will be.
Okay.
This is having, having gone, you know, with some iterations with the plan. So we've been in front of the planning board now for?
Yes, yes, and right.
Months.
Yeah.
And we've got some great feedback. We've been working with the local cons, with, with Jennifer Hughes and Conscom. And we've had some iterations, even the last, past few weeks, about where, where we move, where we sort of shuffle things around. Just, just less than a month ago, we had another big portion of carport canopy that used to be up to the north in the mixed-use area, that after, coming through the ZBA, we learned that, well, it's not clear, it's not clear that we can build there. So let's, so that's why we moved the portion of the array around. So has it adjusted a lot in the, in the last month or so? Yes, but this is the complete and buildable project?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That we're looking at today.
Okay.
Okay.
This would make it more appealing to potential tenants? I mean, is this part of the long-term plan or vision of, of Osgood Landing? I mean, has there been feedback from potential tenants that this is something they'd like to see?
Absolutely. May, may I address that a, a few slides down?
Sure.
When we get to that one? Absolutely. So, so first is the, as we talk about the benefits to the town and to the property, the first one's to the town. There's two, two major benefits. One is new revenue and, and the second one is what I just call community pride. Hitting community pride first, if the town elects to be a host to this project and, and purchase the, the energy from it, I should say, the energy credits from it, the, we can literally say the power from our building is generated by clean renewable solar power generated from the parking lot and, and the rooftop at Osgood Landing.
I'm confused. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. My, a question. That's not our building. We don't own it. And if we, as the community, were to take the credits, how is it?
It's a discount on the bill.
Okay, but why, isn't it, isn't, shouldn't that be going to tenants in the building or new tenants? Isn't that how we're going to attract them? Like, I'm confused.
Can I hit that one in a couple of slides, ma'am?
Sure.
Because I actually have a whole slide that takes a really sort of complicated thing and tries to simple it up in three easy steps.
Okay, great, because?
But I'll, I'll address that.
This is new to me and I don't understand.
So, so, so community pride, I, I think, you know, my first grader understands that one. Community pride. So new revenue. There's a few revenue streams that could come from this project and absolutely zero capital or operating costs required from the town. The, the first revenue stream is that this is taxable property. The second is if North Endover would want it to host and if they wanted, were to negotiate with us over net metering credit arrangement, there'd be discounts on, on energy and I'll, again, describe that a little bit later. And then third is the, the permit fees, the building permit fees. We left, so, so maybe the, you know, as I look at the financial of the project, there's the net present value, what, what's it worth? To us right now, what's the decision we're making it worth? And then also, secondly, is what, what does this mean in terms of annual revenues coming into the town? So second is, what's the benefit to the property? And to Mr. Collier's comment, this will attract socially, environmentally conscious businesses to, to the property. We're seeing premier commercial properties around the state starting to incorporate carport canopies, where they've been building solar arrays on their roofs and, and ground-mounted systems for, for years now on, on commercial properties. It'll reduce the energy costs for tenants. The LED lighting and the lighting that we're going to build within the system is going to replace the, the large, you know, the, the forty-foot towers that you see in the parking lot. This LED accent lighting, you'll drive down Route one-twenty-five at night and look at this and say, wow, that's, that's pretty cool. It's a really, it's a really neat look of these systems at night. It's going to break up the lines of the industrial building. And I think we have a couple slides just after this that show what it would look like. But it's a, it's, you've, I don't even have to say it. I think you've all been at sixteen hundred Osgood Street. It's a, it's a big industrial plant. And frankly, this is going to make the parking lots a lot safer because it's, it's going to slow indirect traffic within the parking lots. Right now, you know, just cars just kind of cut across it and it's, there's really not too much you can do about that. This is going to really help that. So, and then most importantly is that this does not reduce the usable? So, and then most importantly is that this does not reduce the usable forty R space. This is just going up over the roof and it's just going up over existing parking spaces. So it's not, it's not impacting the other space.
So Dan, two items on here are specific, but your response is a general. Be specific about how it reduces energy costs to tenants and help the board understand how it, I guess, six seems to require some additional explanation.
Okay.
If you put a carport over a parking lot, there could have been a building. It's not a building. So is that not talking about the building? Is that talking about the building versus sort of the master plan proposal? So I think two and six, because you're going to go the credit deal as opposed to providing, and you understand energy better than I do, but is there, how does it do two and how does it do six?
And I have a question about another one as well.
Sure.
You had mentioned that there are other sites in Massachusetts that seem to be doing quite well with this. Where are they and are they of the same scope? I'm somewhat a visual person. I'd like to see them. It's hard to see sometimes on a sketch.
Sure.
And if you need to get back to us with a list of those, that's fine as well.
I, I could send you a list. I had some, just for the sake of keeping the presentation shorter, I removed them.
Okay.
But we did have a number of projects. So in Massachusetts right now, there's over eight hundred megawatts of solar installed, most of which is installed in commercial industrial sites. And I'll answer that question and I'll come back to Mr. Miller's.
Okay, thank you.
Of which, most of it's flat roof and ground-mounted. There is a growing number of carport canopies. So what I do have is a presentation that talks about the carport canopies at Endicott College, at Danvers Portyard Club, at the Staples headquarters, at Boston Properties.
But those reduce their energy costs though, directly to those buildings. So how does this benefit the tenants? To bring it full circle, with, it kind of encompasses what Selectman Smedele was asking of these other properties that use it. They're directly benefited from it. How will, how will new tenants, because that's what's needed, new tenants, be, make, will the solar farm reduce energy costs for tenants going into Osgood Landing?
So the, so the ownership of this project is Solar, Osgood Solar LLC, which shares some of the same owners of the property. So this property is built over a land lease. So I would have to get back to you at the exact details of how revenues from that land lease would.
Okay.
So I can't answer that question, but that's generally, but.
Yeah.
As far as the actual energy credits, we'll discuss that in the next slide, how that's accounted for. So Mr. Miller's last question was on the forty R space. It does not reduce usable forty R space. There's no buildings where these canopies currently are.
So maybe the question isn't clear. Forty R space, are you identifying the residential forty R space?
I'm sorry, no, just any, any forty R on the business opportunity zone.
Mixed use.
Oh, mixed use, no.
Residential.
So.
So they're covering parking lots that wouldn't be buildings anyway or?
So maybe what I'm mixing is. Once upon a time, there was a master plan for the site.
Yes, there was.
The master plan envisioned buildings in some of those same parking lots.
Yes.
I understand it's a drawing on a page, you know, I get that. But I think that the can at times, as this conversation has been out there, be the struggle about that drawing on a page and how this affects that drawing on a page, right?
So, so we have a great graphic that shows how these modules and the canopies fit in with what was proposed in two thousand and seven. And after sitting in the planning board and realized we're just confusing the heck out of everybody about what's envisioned and what currently is, we just, we decided to stop presenting that for the moment, just showing this is, this is what's currently here. So we can, I can send along that, that graphic also that shows in block form how what was proposed in two thousand and seven fits with these canopies, because the intent is for the canopies, the canopies don't sit on top of where buildings are proposed in the future, retail or otherwise.
I just have a little graphic of the sites that you listed. How do they compare to the magnitude of this site, such as like Endicott College or the Staples complex or, what did you say? It was Boston Properties? I wasn't running quick enough.
Sure. So there's a, I counted a couple of weeks ago, I believe there's about eighty projects in the state that are similar order of magnitude.
They are. And spread out in the same, or are they all on the roof or?
Spread out. The largest carport canopy currently built and operating in Massachusetts right now, I believe, is one point two megawatts. And I'm aware of about almost thirty megawatts of other carport canopies that are similar to the size of this that are in development, just because the development cycle is longer.
So if we wanted to drive by and see what it looked like or something?
Love to.
Okay.
I can certainly give you the address of some properties to go take a look at. I think it's a great idea. I know a number of the planning board members did.
So Dan, you said that there were, there was, I don't know if you said a number, a number of properties that were similar in magnitude. The proposal for this.
That's valid.
Six megawatts.
Right, but for carport. You, I think you referenced.
Just under four, I believe it's three point six or three point seven.
So I think the question was, if you mean order of magnitude, are there three megawatt carport installs amassed? Are there four megawatt carport?
There's.
Can you provide that list?
Yeah.
So.
Because that would be order of magnitude for me. Order of magnitude isn't one to four or.
Yeah, it's.
In Endicott's case, a hundred and seventy-five.
There are order, same order of magnitude carport canopies in Massachusetts. I believe the largest, I have to think back to a presentation, but it was either one point two or slightly larger. So that would be about a third of the size of what we're proposing. Now, again, we're proposing three separate, I don't believe you can see one, each of the sites from each other. So if you're standing on the southern site, I don't, I don't know that you can actually see, you can't see the north site and it's just such a large property. It's enormous.
So on the south side, how big is, what is the, what is the megawatt equivalent of what's proposed on the south side?
It's about, it's about half. I have to get you the exact.
So about two megawatts?
One point eight or so is in the south side.
On the south. I'm trying to create that order of magnitude reference, sort of the mental image, right? Just so everybody.
So there's an Endicott College-sized carport canopy sitting in the south parking lot as we've proposed it.
About, about.
One point two.
One hundred, thanks.
Just slightly smaller. We, we do have a handout we can show of the forty R overlay.
Two things. I have a list in a presentation and materials that we'd handed to the planning board that gives a list of some of the regional sites. If that's helpful. It doesn't give them by megawatt, but it shows you the different projects and projects in the area.
I think, I think though, that's fine, but I would think ultimately the board will want to know megawatts because magnitude is relative, right?
Magnitude is relative.
I think, I think I look at this a little vividly. To me, this is their property. Whatever they do on it, that doesn't really bother me. This page here that says not yet negotiated, that's where I would start. I would start and see if financially it's worth it. Instead, instead of talking about where you're going to put these panels, what's the ultimate result of this? And that's, that's not even done yet.
What's coming to the town?
Yeah.
What's coming to the town?
I want to know what the taxes are, what the fees are. So if we're taking on something this big, you know.
One of the difficulties with that is until it's permitted and approved, there's not really a project to get in front of the town and start negotiating.
The county put the solar panels on regular houses. It's their property. They put the solar panels up. We don't have any say, so. I'd be more interested what the actual cost, what the reward to the town is. I'd go, I'd come in the back door.
Two things I would, I would point out. So we did submit this to the planning board and if everyone would like to pass it down, I have one copy with me. The buildings in orange are the buildings in the proposed, or in proposed by master plan.
Okay, I was just asking if you had that.
Yeah, I've got a handout.
Okay.
I only have one with me, but you can get it down.
That's good.
You asked the question, so every building in orange is the proposed buildings and we show you how this potential project would not impact any of those proposed buildings. And in fact, with regards to some of those buildings, the people could park in the carports and use those buildings.
Can I ask a question, Dan?
Yes.
I don't remember if you were there, but Andrew, Rosemary, myself and a whole group of people, both from within North Annover and beyond, attended a meeting about two months ago with Secretary Ash at your site.
Yep.
I don't remember this ever being discussed. I mean, there was a very lengthy conversation with the secretary and many of the Mary Mac Valley's economic development leaders about what we could do to make this site more marketable. I feel like this is a substantial investment and change to the layout of the property. It, it looks, it looks restrictive. I don't know if it is restrictive or not, but, you know, is this something that the state has identified as being beneficial to your space and filling up the property? Because it is a large space and as the property owner indicated at this meeting back in August, most of the site is not occupied. So is this?
So the state has programs that are specifically encouraging carport canopies at commercial sites. I was, I was at the meeting. It wasn't discussed at that meeting at the time we were in the middle of a ZBA process where it was, the project was, I believe by the town, not to be allowed.
But I was at the thrust of that meeting and a lot of it was job creation. A lot of the discussion was job creation because of course with job creation, other businesses grow from that.
Temporary job creation with this as they install.
Well, so, I mean, you wish to your.
But there's no, but there's really no permanent job creation. That's my point.
Oh, I thought you were.
Oh, no, I'm with you.
Oh, okay.
It's temporary.
Yeah.
It is temporary, but it also is not taking away from permanent. And if you look at the proposal that's, I'm sorry, the plan that's coming around, you'll see, all of the buildings that we've proposed in the past, that were proposed as part of the Osgood can still be built if somebody wants to come and be a tenant there.
So just a question to that, just because I, at four years, I'm one of the newer people in terms, I know some of these folks are as well, in terms of, you know, oh five doesn't provide a lot of background for me. There was no, that's not identifying anything in the mixed-use zone.
No.
That graph. There was no proposal on the mixed-use zone?
No, we're not planning to put the solar panels in the mixed-use zone.
I understand, but there's, there's nothing, you, that image is to identify, so that image doesn't include areas where otherwise there's no solar proposed. I just want to put the, since someone else is really getting a seat.
The, the mixed-use zone is right on there. So that's the image right off the town's website.
Isn't that the orange?
Right. No, the mixed-use, I may have to take a photo and put it up on the screen. No, I just, I just don't, you gotta allow folks to, by standing in front, you're creating some impediment. You know, it's not showing that there is, it just does nothing.
Right, so I think.
Maybe Laurie could scan it.
Are you, are you thinking from two thousand and seven when we actually saw and walked to the, you know, walked everything over there and had all the big pictures of depictions of the housing and the buildings and the this and the that? You're, are you looking for, because I would love to see that, what the two merged together would look like? Is there a depiction of that?
That's what we were just looking at.
If, all I'm saying is, I'm not saying it's the fault of the, the image, the image in the area, so in the area that there's the mixed-use zone on that image you were just passing around.
I don't think there's anything in that image.
Sorry. There's just nothing. There's no, I'm not saying, just, if you're going to create a site picture, include it all. So in that current image, it doesn't show solar because it's not being allowed there. But it also doesn't show the mixed-use buildings constructed. It's just, it's just identify this mixed-use.
I miss the, we're looking at, because I thought I saw the solar was all in the blue and then the mixed-use was all in the orange. I thought that was a comprehensive picture of everything.
The orange where the buildings as proposed in the master plan, but didn't, didn't depict any mixed-use buildings between the residential and the primary building.
So there is one building on here out at the street and this, this is the image off the town website.
Right. You know, saying.
So we use, we use the Osgood image right off the town's website.
Right. I'm not saying it's a deceptive thing. I'm just trying to provide the context.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
If there's a mixed-use proposed in the mixed-use site, we should put the mixed-use structures in the space, that's all. I think it's helpful for everybody.
All we did, we did not create a new image. We took the Osgood image off the town's website.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we showed.
I'm not putting on a new, I just want to make sure, again.
We want to know what we're looking at.
You're speaking to us. We're trying to raise the awareness of as many people as possible. So if we're going to share this, which we should, this space is proposed mixed-use, but there is neither orange here.
And Andrew.
So I'm suggesting that if there's a proposal on one of the oh five, oh seven, we just include it. So you see the scope.
But it's not.
Andrew Lloyd sent it to you, so we could put it up on screen for viewers at home.
It's not proposed to be solar.
So, okay, no, it's not proposed to be solar, absolutely.
It's left, I got you now, it's left blank.
I'm just saying, if we're going to.
The town manager and I are on the same page.
Same page. If we're going to show a vision of the entire site, let's show it as proposed and developed. Let's just not leave gaps because that's not going to be solar. zoning was clear on that. Therefore, the assumption would be it'd be developed as mixed-use and there would be orange buildings in that section.
I think part of the issue is going in front of every board. Everyone has a different concept of what they want. When we presented this to the planning board, the request was, it's too confusing, just get it out of here. Just show us what you're doing. When you asked the question this evening, how is it impacting our forty R? Well, we happen to have the picture of forty R as it appears on your webpage with the solar overlay.
No, we certainly, we certainly understand that we're not the easiest board to come before. I mean, and Mr. Larry has been actively involved in the town and he's, he's doing a great job as he can with the presentation, but you're right. We, and you've got five individuals and the town manager who are going to just pepper you with their perspective.
Absolutely.
So you've, unfortunately, you've got to be on your game, but you can get us the information after. It doesn't all have to be given to us tonight.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing I would point out, when you talk about order of magnitude, the amount on this particular site that is going in as carports is greater in order of magnitude of some of the other carports that you would traditionally see in the state for a number of reasons. One of them is there are not many parking lots in the state that have sixty-four hundred parking spaces sitting there, for the most part vacant all day long. So it's taking advantage of the fact that there are sixty-four hundred parking spaces and rather than proposing as most of the six megawatt facilities in the state are ground-mounted, it would be far less expensive to ground-mount two or three megawatts here and just put them right down on the ground. The theory with actually putting them on the carports is to continue to preserve as many opportunities as possible at a more expensive cost to the owner.
Show us more.
It, I mean, again, if you look at some of the, if you look at Google, if you look at Whole Foods, if you look at some of the other larger facilities across the country and over in Europe, you see them of much larger magnitude. There's sixty-four hundred and forty parking spaces out there.
Think about that.
Right.
This is, this is part of the dilemma of this board.
This will always be parking, this will always be parking, that will always be.
Was worked with the owner.
Oh, I don't think that they've.
It was a highly developed plan that was started in two thousand and five and unfortunately with TIPS and all kinds of things to make it as enticing as possible, and unfortunately, we really have not seen what we anticipated. I don't even think the TIF was even enacted in any case. So it's troubling because this is, we do not have many commercial sites left. So we're, the board is going to be asking a lot of questions because town meeting voted for this as a site that would bring in jobs. You know, I often say, tell people fourteen thousand people worked around the clock at that plant. You know, I often say, tell people, 14,000 people worked around the clock at that plant. Those days are gone, we get that. But they were our number-one for years and years taxpayer. So we're, we wanna make sure that we're not gonna give up one thing and get something that won't generate jobs and income that we were anticipating and hoping for the original plan, that a lot of time, a lot of money was put into that plan in 2005.
And to that point...
Good, which is fair.
It's off the ground. It's not being put on the ground. It's not taking away footprint or property or existing parking spaces that are out on the site. The theory is, I mean, you're gonna put a carport on 6,000 parking spaces, you're doing it with the hope that there will be cars parked under it. And the property's been marketed, unfortunately, the economy crashed very soon after the Osgood was passed. And as much as the town is not happy to see that this isn't the largest commercial-producing property in the town, I'm sure you can imagine that the landlords aren't thrilled that they own a piece of property that is not producing the type of revenue that everyone anticipated would be produced in 2006 either. And so their feeling is, if we do this nicer than a ground-mounted solar array, and we build carports, and we do it in a way that economically won't hurt anybody and can help everybody, but that still preserves the 40R...
Well, let me ask you, and I might, I'm sorry if I'm getting you off track. Why wasn't, why wasn't there more emphasis towards the back of the building? Because, of course, as you know, in, in commercial real estate, the value generally is in the front, you know, street view, so forth and so on, especially for the mixed-use. So was there a thought of, gee, maybe we should just put it just on roofs and mainly just in the back?
We are putting in the back, and we are putting, so the nearest solar panel to the street is 425 feet off of Osgood Street. There is no panel going any closer than 425 feet to Osgood Street, and I believe it's 430-something feet from the edge until the north roadway. So that we're preserving a huge distance off of the north roadway and off of Osgood Street.
So your other question, your concern about this piece here?
Well, it's just, again, the most valuable that most people, when they, you know, especially for mixed-use, especially if it was general business-type, they're gonna want, they want street visibility, that's what they're...
But why do you think, but that's just a parking lot, so that's not gonna be any other than a parking lot? So it's, they're covering a parking lot with these carports. I don't, I don't understand the concern there, because it seems like the buildings are still proposed in that area, they're not built, obviously, but this is just a parking lot. It's not going to be buildings, it's never gonna be buildings, it's just a parking lot.
Well, wouldn't the point be, you're looking at a map taken at a time when everybody was holding hands and saying, "This is what we want"? We are eight years later, and none of this map is a reality, other than the yellow building in the middle. And I'm just providing, I'm not sorry, degree of disagreement, just a perspective, which is, once you do build these, then, then this map becomes a little bit fixed in stone, doesn't it? Because then that building needs to fit in that space.
Well, that, that was my point.
That's, I think, I was just trying to...
My point.
What are these two little buildings?
They were more than building with parking.
Dan, I have a question, I don't know if I'm...
Just the, the orientation of the map is wrong. I mean, in the map that we were just given, and it was photocopied, you show how in the rear of the building, there are all these ground arrays, but then in the present...
They're carports.
Even though it's identified as ground, ground array on this, and it's, it's identified as ground array, and it's identified over an area that on the...
No, we're showing you an example of what a ground one looks like, and we're showing you an example of what a carport looks like, and what a rooftop looks like. In the plan itself, the area highlighted in the plan, they're all carports or rooftop. There are no ground arrays.
There's no...
They're not doing any ground arrays.
Okay, so these don't match, I mean, not even kind of perfectly, I just wanted to make sure.
So that as people ask the questions, we want to be able to show them the difference between the three, and that just happened to be on that particular slide.
Okay.
The one other thing, and you do raise an interesting question, the panels that are used for solar collection are the same. They're not different panels. So to the extent that they are on the top of a carport, and a tenant or a developer came along and wanted to put a building, it would not be difficult to lift those panels and put them onto the roof of the building.
Oh.
So it's not, I mean, as you say, set in stone, it's not set in stone, it's not that the panels can't be moved for 25 years, hence panel claw. It's just a claw holding a panel on a mount. So all you have to do is take it out of the claw, and you can relocate it.
How long, how long do the panels last?
About 25 years.
They last 25 years?
Yeah.
Do they lose power as they age?
There's some small amount of dissipation. 1%.
Aesthetically, what happens to them? Do they get, do they start getting like, I don't know, for lack of a better word, sort of a condensation-type of look to them, or...
First of all, they're gonna be...
You're not gonna see them?
You're not gonna see them. They're gonna be 16, 18.
That's necessarily true. You're coming down a hill when you're coming down 125. You're coming down a hill. As you approach, you are going to see the tops of them, because you're coming down a hill. So you will see the tops of them. So aesthetically, I think it does matter, in particular if we eventually are hoping that there is some sort of a retail area here. So you do come down a hill. I mean, I don't think it's, but you will see them. So it's a good question.
We have some great images that show the backdrop of the, the, the commercial properties that they're at, you know, the, seeing a picture of a canopy sitting in, you know, covering the Whole Foods parking lot, I mean, those...
I see, I feel that's different, because it's Whole Foods, they've put it in their parking lot, it's, it's Boston Properties, they've put it in their, I mean, we have nothing, there's nothing, I don't, I don't know. I guess that's where I have a hard time with it. I mean, I believe it's, I believe it's private property, and, and to a certain degree, owners should be able to do what they want with their private property. But I don't look at this the same as I look at canopies at Whole Foods, or canopies at Boston Properties, or canopies at Staples. I just don't. Because this was done with a TIF for the taxpayers, through lots of hard work to rezone that area, where a lot of us were involved in this, and nothing's happened, except now we're gonna put in a bunch of solar panels. So it's hard, I understand why we're all here, I guess, is my point. So the commercial, the other commercial projects is like, those buildings were there, they're thriving businesses, and then here's a way to offset their costs. I get that. Put them on the schools, put them, you know, I know people are doing all sorts of things like that, and I, I get that. This is hard, I think, for some of us anyway, because it's, these are gonna go in, and it's gonna sit another eight, 10, 15 years with the solar panels. I don't know.
But, but also, I, I mean, I think the property owners are trying to figure ways to make money with the, with the property. And right now, as we've heard, you know, the economy kinda crashed after the 40R was, was passed, and I don't know what the occupancy of the building is right now.
There are 697,000 square feet leased, and the building is 1,367,000 square feet. So we have zero from loose end, so we have leased slightly more than 50% of the property in the eight years.
How much?
697,000.
Well, you said it's eight years, you're right. Not cumulative. Right now, there's, there's, right now...
Right now, today, there are 697,000-plus square feet of leased property.
50%, is manufacturing.
There's ma, there's manufacturing, there's warehouse, and there's...
If I can, 50% is, 50% is manufacturing. I mean, just give me the board context again. The expectation in 2007, as part of the arrangement, was that that 50% would never exceed 30%. And that's part of, again, this is all part of the response you're receiving, right? Is that, is it an agreement that they would, they would achieve at least 70% of non-warehouse space, tonally, I'm sorry, about 50% is warehouse space?
No, I'm confused, you said...
I'm sorry, I said the wrong term. About 50% is warehouse space, I had the numbers wrong.
50% of the current occupancy is warehouse space.
Right, and the expectation...
But that's building 70, and that's a huge building too, right? That's, that's...
The warehouse is high bay 30 and 31 in the back, which is where the back solar arrays are going over, on the west side, on the riverside of the property.
And that's 50% of the occupied...
Current occupied space, Andrew, what you're saying is warehouse space, but as overall, the board was told, or the town was told, that 30% of the total space would never exceed warehouse.
Well, it wasn't told, I mean, again, everybody understands the timing, right? So the timing was '07, which was complicated, became worse in '08 and '09. The TIF agreement assumes that there would be 10 million in investment between '05 and '15, another 10 million between '15 and '25, and of that 20 million in total investment, eventually, through that process, the warehouse space would constitute no more than 30% of the total development, that it would be 70% manufacturing, commercial, and retail. Quite frankly, none of the TIF, but they haven't taken advantage of the TIF because that growth hasn't happened. So it's been net, net zero to everybody, right?
Right.
Because there's been no TIF, there's been no growth, there's been no additional tax revenue.
So I think my, my point earlier was the fact that, you know, to me, the building has been kinda underutilized over these last few years, and to me, this is a, a way of trying to get further utilization, trying to make some revenue from the, generate some revenue from the property. And, you know, I, you know, I think there's gotta be creative thinking here to, to do that, because right now, the property has been kinda sitting so, you know, underutilized, that it's just looking like a big, you know, kinda like a white elephant out there, and things have to happen. I think things have to move forward.
So is there agreed-upon homework that I'm supposed to be following up with Mr. Larry on?
It seems that we still have quite a few questions. Oh, yeah, they need to, public.
Yeah, we'll add public comment when they wrap up, then.
I think they're gonna speak to this.
Oh, and they should have questions, or specific questions.
No, okay.
Either way, you can, your meeting...
We're not at a hearing right now.
We're not at a hearing, that's what...
And we're not taking the vote on this tonight, right?
No.
No, 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 I think they want to speak to this, so they have, they should speak now, not, are you talking public comment at the end of the meeting?
Well, public comment's next.
No, but I think they wanted to...
I know they want to speak to this.
Oh, okay.
But it's not a hearing, so...
But they can still speak if you allow it. That's only if you allow.
Your meeting. Are you willing to take some questions? Absolutely. Excellent, come on up. How about that?
That works. I thought you were saying, I thought you thought they were here for something.
Oh, no, I knew they were here. I just wasn't quite sure how to do it.
This is fine, this is good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, Chair.
I'm Larry McHugh. I live on 136 Castlemere Place, and I, I just wanted to come and talk about this, this solar plan. I'm the CEO of an engineering company of my own. I build facilities all over the world, mostly heavy manufacturing sites, so I'm not commercially interested in this site in any way, I just want to disclaim that. But I am a citizen of the town, and participated and supported Article 27 and 28 when we originally put this plan together, which was an excellent mixed-use plan for that site. There's a movie, Field of Dreams, and they said, you know, "If you build it, they will come." That was one of the major quotes in that movie. And we never built it, we never executed anything on this plan. And as a, as a citizen of North Andover and the cit, and the state, you know, I'm really disappointed in that. I'm really disappointed in that. And the original plan for this site is still a viable mixed-use site. I've looked at both drawings, we can read drawings, and there's a sea of carports where there's a retail space in the original plan. And, you know, I'm just here to ask the selectmen and the Planning and Zoning Commission in town, not to let anything happen to this site. This is Death Valley right now in North Andover, and it shouldn't be that way. It sits on the Merrimack River, it sits on a commercial railroad line, it sits on a four-lane 125, and right down the street from 495. I mean, I've seen developments all over the, the counties, I've seen it all over the state, all over the nation, and all over the world, that, that don't have those advantages to this site. And so it's just crazy. I, I don't have anything against the solar panels, but I just don't want to see this site covered with a sea of carports. It's gonna look like, in my mind, a massive rental car parking lot in an airport, okay? Unless it's done very carefully. And I think that's very difficult to do. I've looked at the drawings, the carports to the, up the road towards what your boy or right where retail prop, building was gonna be, okay? The ones on the other side of the building are right in front of where a second retail building was gonna be. And it's covering that whole area. I think that the roof's a great place for solar cells, and I think if they build, the buildings that were originally in this plan, they'd have a lot more roof space in those areas. And I, I just, I strongly recommend to the, to the selectmen and everyone in this town not to deviate from that plan. There was a lot of work, I agree with Tracy, there was a lot of work put into that plan by a lot of people in the town, and a lot of citizens like myself got behind it and voted for it. And I feel like we've really been let down. I think there's one other thing I wanted to say. But I think that's it. I think that's it. So this is not a Plan B, as far as I'm concerned. Until I see a lot, a lot more about this plan, it's a Plan F, because this plan undermines what was the original mixed-use for that, that facility.
Thank you, Mr. ...
And that's, that's what's gonna bring jobs and vibrancy to that area of the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Well, no questions for you?
No, there weren't any.
Would you like a rebuttal opportunity, for lack of a better...
One of the things that's important to note is, there's nothing going in the form of a carport where a mixed-use building was proposed to be built. There is, there is nothing. And again, as we explained, carports can be lifted up, the solar panels can be put on the roof of a building if we get a building.
I, I think, I think some of Larry, Mr. McHugh's sentiment is, is what's other many people in the community feel, myself among them. But it's a tough situation, because to a degree, it is private property. I mean, not to a degree, it is private property. So...
I think that, that, you know, that sentiment is the nail on the head. There's nobody that's more disappointed that builders wouldn't come and build, and tenants wouldn't come and...
I know, we got a lot of building going on in town, around the town. There's quite a bit of residential going up. No, there absolutely is. And sometimes you need to get out there and find those folks to come and build.
That property has been on the market and with brokers for a long period of time.
And somehow, we're building elsewhere in town. So, so that's not a super argument, and, you know, or, or, but there is disappointment with, with the property in general, and, and, but again, I revert back to it as private property.
Is there any chance at all that, I mean, that, that the site was to generate businesses and jobs? I mean, you, you mentioned how there is a solar company on site. Is there any chance that there's a solar company that would build the panels that, in that facility? I mean, was that ever...
Yes, there was actually a company at one point that came to look to manufacture there, and they went out of business.
Can I ask what this is going to cost the owner to build? Do you, do you know, gen, in general, obviously?
So, so, well...
In terms of tax revenue, we, this...
I'm not talking about tax revenue, I'm talking about...
Construction costs.
Construction costs to build this, to the owner.
The, the, the cost of this type of system, depending, of this, excuse me, the cost of this types of system is around $2 a watt.
So we're at six megawatts. What does that mean?
Hold on. Is that, is that, is that $2 a megawatt all-in cost, or are we talking panels and infrastructure? What's the all-in number, Dan? Is it two or three?
The, the all-in cost of construction's about $2 a watt.
So what is that?
So, so, so this is a six-megawatt...
This project is going to cost...
So about $12 million project.
So $12 million project to bring solar as opposed to a retail building.
Let me ask you two.
Twelve...
Some of the documents are a little bit confusing, and... So who's going to own the solar panels? Who owns that?
Osgood Solar.
So the owner will also...
You're right, you're right.
Because, and what is she, are they gonna lease back to themselves? Is that what the plan is?
They lease back to the landhold company, whether it's them or any future owner, or, yeah.
But as it stands right now, the landowner will will also operate this company. Is that what you're telling me? That's how I...
They have some of the same shareholders, but not all.
I see.
I think structure and cost has come up and important to some of the members, because $12 million may be a little light in the number, and maybe not. But I think it's, it kind of just adds to that. And I revert back, it's private property, but it adds to the disappointment of that kind of money. Why isn't it going to something else that will be generating money?
In order to invest money, you have to have people willing to spend money on what you're investing it in. You have to have a bank willing to finance the building that you're going to build. If someone were to build a $12 million building there and could generate nothing other than $4 or $5 a square foot in rent, they would go bankrupt very quick, and they wouldn't be able to finance the property. You have to have a tenant to want to be in a building, or a buyer to want to buy for the cost that you're going to spend to build, if they could do it. And again, you know, as your town manager has stated, it has been about eight years. I'm telling you, there is nobody more disappointed that this hasn't taken place than the owner. They've been sitting on a project for a long period of time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
If this is, if the green light is given, and you end up moving forward and constructing these, the solar array, when would construction begin? When would the investment be made?
We're looking at 2016.
Spring 2016.
I just, for point of clarification, a little bit earlier, you mentioned that the original agreement said that from 2016 to 2026, if 2025, if $10 million were invested, they would qualify for the TIF.
You need to add $10 million of value.
So if they added, oh, okay, so they have to add $10 million in value, not necessarily invest $10 million in the site?
That's the same. There'd be costs associated with $10 million of adding growth in tenants. And I don't think this, this kind of construction wouldn't fall under the TIF. It's not adding jobs. It's not adding...
I have prior jobs.
Although zoning, I use its buildings. It's not physical buildings as we know them, so it wouldn't qualify under the TIF.
So, I mean, I was on zoning board in 2007 when we went through this, and I personally don't remember where we located every single building, but I would like to go back, as Mr. McHugh had suggested, and look at the, look at the overlay again, which I see Mrs. McHugh is holding up a rendering of that. I'd like to look at it and like, see what that actual overlay would look like at this point, because this drawing obviously is showing us that it's not, but we have some, you know, I'd like to look at the original, as we agreed to back in 2007, the 40-hour overlay district, and just see where the buildings were proposed to be located at that time, and see how they, how they match up.
Certainly. And one thing I can tell you is, so when we started this back in March, one of the plans, and it may be one of the plans that Mr. McHugh is looking at, did have some of the arrays in the mixed-use zone. We did go before the zoning board of appeals. We had some deliberations in front of the zoning board to discuss Osgood overlay, I-2 overlay, and what was and wasn't allowed. And at the end, we did move all of the solar arrays out of the mixed-use zone, as Dan alluded to earlier, and everything into the business opportunity. So Mr. McHugh may be looking at something that was presented back in March, but based on what's in front of you today, there is nothing...
No, he's looking at something that was presented in 2007.
But, but what he's, I think what he's saying is that the solar array presentation was from March, and then it's been since changed.
Correct. Correct. And the solar array that was presented in March may have, in fact, encroached on the mixed-opportunity zone and possibly on one of the buildings that was proposed in 2007, and it no longer does that. That's correct.
Unfortunately, Mr. Manzi has left, who was here earlier and probably could have spoke to that.
He knew that question was coming up, and he figured he'd sneak out while he could.
So the interesting point in the discussion is that there is this, not a community struggle, but a struggle between what you've mentioned, right? The disappointment of the lack of development versus this proposal, where there isn't, there is just, you know, I guess an anticipation, maybe a hope, that this somehow changes the economics of locating property there, locating tenants.
Correct.
I'm not sure. I think Mr. Medley had asked for some examples where development has been jump-started from that, and I think that's something I certainly will forward to the board. Is this project, without knowing the details of the economics of the project, and I'm still struggling with the 12, I have to tell you, Dan, because some of the other examples given locally were a dollar or so more expensive all-in. The Brooks proposal was a dollar more expensive than that, but... Two years ago, yes. Okay, cheap is good. Is there a scalable option here? Is there an option that says, instead of getting all of this, where there's a debate about what it means to the site, that the community can embrace the concept and the beginning of the discussion, but that maybe just, again, this is really sort of pie-in-the-sky stuff, that maybe going from three to six is linked to coming back with a new tenant, a new development, that we start to, instead of, because I have to, again, I wasn't here in '05. I arrived in '11. I started to read the '05 documents, the '07 documents, the agreements in '08. I can only imagine what that discussion was like. There were land use boards involved, town being involved, a commitment from the community, and I can...
There was a lot.
And then from the work, what was evident in the document was this belief that it was going to be transformative. And the feedback, I think you hear at any number of boards, land use boards are here, is, you know, it's more of a facial expression than maybe words, right? This is, is there a way to do that, so that you can reinvigorate the energy behind the property?
Because of goodwill, as well.
Yeah, goodwill, because 10 years from now, if what's there is, I think it's, I do think that there is, there is a piece here where it's an opportunity to reengage the community, the belief that somehow, something will rise out of the ashes, and that something be more consistent with what the community discussed. Is there some way to do that in phases, to link this?
I do think the plan was intended to do that, and that was the concept behind carports rather than ground mounting. It was spend the extra money, put them in carports, and design it in a way that the panels can be taken off the top of the carports and put on top of buildings if people want to build. At the end of the day, let's say that this is a location that is destined to become a destination location, a place where people want to build and people want to go. They are going to show up eventually. We're hoping that having the carports and having some development there is going to jumpstart it. And if it does, the panels can be lifted and put on the roofs. On the flip side...
Right, the flip side, that's important.
If it is a location where nobody is going to go, because they don't want to, and they haven't gone there for the past nine years, if that's the case, then at least the town and the owner have the opportunity to get some value out of the property.
Yeah.
Create revenue, create taxable...
I get that, but I think it goes to Mr. McHugh's point. That's, that's a spot that only can create bad will. So what I'm suggesting is something nuanced between those, right? What I'm suggesting is, maybe it is a destination someday, or a destination might be strong. Maybe it is a place where folks want to live, work, or work, live, or whatever order you want to be in. But there is a little bit of a question of whether or not the solar adds value, is neutral, or impacts adversely folks wanting to be there. That is still open. I think we'd all agree that's open.
And isn't that the owner's plan and the owner's decision to make? If they're making the investment?
I will tell you one difference. I think most folks on this board will recognize, as big as the summer, the property rights. But this wasn't just property rights specific. This has a 40-hour agreement. It has a TIF agreement on it. It came with, it came with linkage payments associated with certain aspects of development. So this particular parcel is not your traditional, let's put a flag out of a single-family residence and do what we want. This came with a community input, not like any other parcel in the community. So there is a linkage back that's not just a sprit de corps here. It's an expect... Let me finish. Not so, all I'm asking is to create some goodwill. Is there someplace scalable where the owner starts to derive a benefit from a good project, and at the same time links it to the possibility that this gets closer to reality, just in case, God forbid, that by installing solar, it...
A tiny little...
Can't we link those in some way? Can't we all feel good, rather than just being pro or con, or wondering whether or not the result will be positive, other than the cash flow piece?
I think, I think that once you empower and you, you know, you get your contractors there and you pay your costs. So to build a house, okay, it doesn't cost you $150 a foot, okay? Half your money is spent mobilizing your forces and getting things done. Then you're paying per square foot on top of that. You have your fixed costs, you have your variable costs. For this project, for this landlord, the project as a six-megawatt facility is the project that makes sense. We went to zoning. It complies with zoning. It actually complies with 40R, and it complies with I-2, and the zoning went through that. We've done it in a way that we're not interfering with the 40R. We also run the risk that if we go out a year, or two years, or three years, the solar opportunities might not be there any longer. I know that the queue keeps getting bumped, and it keeps getting bumped, and it keeps getting renewed, but there's also the chance that a time will come when it isn't going to get renewed, which means if you do half the project now, in a year or two, you might not get the other half. And then what's the answer? In a year, if no one comes, do they get to come and build the other half with the comment, well, we tried for a year and no tenant came, so can we come and build the other half? Either it's going to work or it's not. But again, you know...
Either it's going to work for the developer, or it's going to work for both of us, but there's not a situation where it just works for the town. I mean, I think that, are we assuming that's what the economics of the deal are intended to do?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, you said it's either going to work or not. I guess I get, I get hung up in like, in that.
Either it's going to attract more tenants or it isn't.
Right.
If it isn't, at least there's revenue for the town and for the landowner in the interim. And if it doesn't, then it's no different than the property's been the last eight years.
Except there is an option that it makes it less attractive. I don't know if that's the case, but there are some who believe that.
How can it be less attractive than nobody wanting to go there for eight years?
I mean, because you're, because, because there is, because there's an assumption in that, there's assumption that, that 100% of what's not happening is simply market. And yet, we have 230 units that proposed on Berry Street. We have 50-some odd units built over here. So the assumption that 100% of what's happening on that site is simply market is a struggle, I think, for most folks.
It's 530 units. It's not 200, and it's not 50. It's 530.
So you don't have to build anything.
But you have to, in order for a developer...
Built a little store right out front, that tiny little building. I'd like to see that, the tiny little building.
No one will build it until the apartment is built, and the apartment builder wouldn't build the apartments.
This is, this is where you're going to struggle with the argument. I think that's a struggle.
And how many, how many tenants have left? I left. I worked for Northern Essex Community College. They couldn't wait to break their lease and leave. And they went to the Mills in Lawrence.
Right.
Right.
Train station across the street.
No, it had nothing to do with that. This was, this was... No, 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 no. I'm sorry. Let me correct you with that. This was the, the non-credit evening division of Northern Essex Community College that used to be at Haverhill. They actually relocated to, to Osgood, and then very rapidly left to space over in the Mills. This isn't, this isn't the, the day credit. This was a whole separate division that, that was here. And, and my understanding is, there's other tenants, many. We're leaving. We're leaving. We've left. We are building, building.
One of our largest employers are leaving your site. I mean, that, I think that's, this is, actually isn't really breaking timing.
I have no idea.
Jessica, you have no idea?
You have no idea?
No.
You're losing, you're losing our 13th largest employer, right?
Well, he doesn't represent the owner in that regard.
No, I do, and I know they have a lease, so...
They should give you a...
Well, they're making a 10, an approximately $10 million investment.
Or fear is leaving town. That's been publicly communicated. That's not breaking a lease. But they're, they're 160 employees, and that's... I think my point is to avoid this, isn't it? Do we want a community to debate about success or failure? How about trying to link what you're trying to do to something the community wants? We're smart people. You're a heck of a lot smarter than I am. There's not some way to link a success with this, so we both win? Because I think it is beyond a failure from a community perspective. If it's eight years from now, however successful the solar is, if nothing else happens, I can't even imagine what happens next. I mean, I, in terms of, there'll be no goodwill to sit at the table, no ability to sit down and come up with another creative alternative, because people will have spent 20 years feeling like the energy's gone. It just seems, all of these present, you know, it's great talking to Dan, because he sees things as opportunity, I find. Can we create an opportunity here? Can we create some, some opportunity from this discussion? Because, because I think that's what most people want. And I don't know what it is. I don't have any magical answers.
Again, the use is allowed under zoning. I don't, I don't understand the concept between trading a use.
I'm not trading a use. I'm trying you to recognize that if you sit in that chair and you look at people who spent a lot of time and a lot of energy and a lot of commitment, being convinced that this was what was going to be there without the blue, that maybe if there was something else included, some way to broaden the conversation and do something that brought about that vision for everybody, this isn't the zoning meeting. This isn't the zoning meeting. This was a meeting about community input and selectmen, elected officials' reaction to things. I'm just speculating. I wish I had this magic answer where they got it all done. I'm just suggesting it'd be sort of neat if some of this could happen and solar happened. I think it'd be neat to work together.
I think everyone gets the sentiment. So what I would, I would propose a couple of things. We, we had several questions for you. I think you're getting our sentiments. Go back, see if you could come up with another plan. We will also have the town manager draft the sentiment of this board to be sent to the planning board.
I'll need another meeting for that, I think.
Yeah, you might need another meeting.
I guess the worst would be eight years down the road, they have these carports, and, right, you have all these carports, and they've got no cars on them, right? Because we've got no development there, we've got nothing there. So it would kind of look like fossils, dinosaurs, just standing there. I think that's part of the sense.
Absolutely. Don't take the tiny one.
So, no, it's future. So you, do you really think you'll need another meeting for us to discuss this, or do you think?
No, I think...
But what is, what is the goal of this discussion? We don't have a vote in front of us, right, at this point?
No, but we can, we can send a letter to the planning board discussing some of our concerns and our comments.
And I agree with that. Mrs. McHugh would like to speak as well. Come on up. Although I feel like we're piling on to these poor gentlemen right now, and they're not necessarily... Well, she should have better prepared you. Blame her.
This is Linda McHugh, 136. Castlemere, husband of Larry, I mean, wife of Larry. But I think what you're not, you may not understanding is that us as residents, driving down that hill, looking at those awful carports that you do at the Hertz, I would not want to build a building next to them, because it's so unattractive. You don't see that, this development, we have a home up in Seabrook, New Hampshire.
Linda, you kind of have to direct generally.
Oh, okay. They are, they are building new development right on Route 1, that they moved Walmart, Home Goods, they put in, they moved Bob's Furniture into this beautiful new park. There are no carports there for, for solar, and because retailers would not want to move there if they had them. So I think you're not understanding our... We're not against the solar.
No, back to me, back to me.
If it got, if it got put in the back of the, of the, of the site, I think we would all feel better. And maybe not six megawatts or whatever it is, maybe only three or four. I think we would all be happier with that.
Well, I think that's what town manager made the suggestion. We're, we're trying to find a happy common ground, at least for something going forward. And this, this isn't necessarily it.
Yeah, I, I would hope that they would take that into consideration, because even from 125, you can see that parking lot. And I think it would look absolutely appalling, and it would spoil the site for any development that we would have in the future. And hopefully, we will.
And there goes the pro, con, and middle. It's, some people may find them very unattractive, and Linda, you know, Mrs. McHugh does. Some people find them attractive, because it makes you feel good, because they're green. So, yeah, I understand that. I think the general tone, though, is one of disappointment. After eight, nine years, this is, this is what it is.
And I guess my point is too, that, I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of them. I think it's, it's, I'd like to see them, but I'd also, I agree with the town manager and the rest of the board, that I think we need to see some kind of a give and take here, where we've waited, and, you know, I was on the zoning board, and it was a lot of work at the time. And I'd like to see something come of the property, too. And I understand the economics. I understand things are not moving right now, but there's got to be some middle ground that we can come to, where, you know, where we're not, the town isn't always giving and saying, okay, kind of like, coming back to what is it you want to do now? You know, we went through the 40R, we went through all that process, now we've got, you know, the next thing, that hasn't come to fruition yet. What are we doing now? You know, I, I agree. I think we should have some kind of a, a give and take here.
But I think if what you've said, and I believe you, and I can, you can tell that you've both put a lot of work into it, we're not trying to just, just get rid of the project. But if what you've said is true, that this type of a project will attract tenants, then it's easy. Then it's easy. It'll just, it'll, you'll meet your requirement that the town manager is suggesting, or the board is suggesting, is that something good will come of it?
But you can't put a requirement on...
So you're saying, we're going to have an agreement that says, we can put three megawatts, and then every time we lease 100,000 square feet, we can add more megawatts? I mean, that, that doesn't, there's no statutory authority for that. There's no legal authority to do that. That's an unconstitutional taking of someone's property. Either the right to, if I can just finish for a second...
So we know you're an attorney, but we're talking about as residents and stakeholders in a community, you're speaking from a legal perspective. I understand what you can and can't do, although I certainly don't have the legal experience you have. But we're in a little bit of a practical conversation here, too, about the community community that goes beyond the legal part of this. And if we stick straight to the legal, quite frankly, we all know that it's going to get awful complicated, but it may not result in any good outcome for anybody. So, can we put aside the legal and get into a practical conversation to a certain extent?
We did start with a practical, which is they're all going up on carports. We're agreeing they can all be taken off the carports and put on the roofs of buildings.
So, you're not amenable to an alternative to another one's been presented? Is that what...
No, we are amenable to alternatives.
Great.
Okay? We're not...
That's good.
Okay. We're amenable to putting in a provision that says that if buildings come, we will remove them and put them on buildings.
If buildings come.
If tenants come, if tenants want... Okay.
They're going to come with them. And so, yes, you want to... That's the point. I can go lies the issue.
We are amenable to putting more of them on the roof if we can do it.
We are amenable to pushing...
Okay. Well, that's a step in the right direction. If you're taking some off the ground in the carports and putting them on the roof, that's at least a step in the right direction.
When there ever is a building, I go right back.
No, that's...
Existing roof.
Can I... With all due respect, a question was asked, and if I could have the opportunity to answer it, I would, and hopefully I'll do it in a way that will show some willingness to move with you.
That's good.
Okay. I'm listing things separately and not conjunctively, but a list of different potential conditions. Number one, that the carports are and will, and we will confirm as a condition that they are designed, that the panels can be removed and put onto the roofs of buildings.
Shall or can?
Both. If we have tenants, we will design it so that they can be, and we shall do it if...
Got it.
Okay? That's number one. Number two, we would be amenable to a condition that asks us to look into the viability of putting more of them onto the roof and taking them off of the carports and out of the parking lot. Number three, we would be amenable to a condition at looking to moving them further back from the roadway to preserving the views.
That's a good start. That's a very good start.
May I ask why it took here to get to more on the roof and moving them back? This has been going on for quite some time. I think you've hit some other... Why weren't we... Should I applaud town manager Mailer for getting you to move a little bit? I mean, I'm curious as to why you weren't amiable to working with other boards.
Because no one's asked us to work with them. People have told us either we can do it or we can't.
I did at the beginning. And this is... I asked if you could put more on the roof.
I'm not asking for a response. I would disagree, respectfully disagree with that, but I'm not going to ask for a response. We'll just... We'll leave it at that, and it's not between you and I. I think there are processes which need to play out, but anyway.
Exactly. I mean, one of the things, you don't have the opportunity to sit in a room and negotiate. Unfortunately, that's not the way the zoning and the planning process work, and I think the town would confirm that we did try that. We did, but you can't. I mean, when you're in an approval process, you violate public meeting, you violate different laws, and you just can't do it. Thankfully, this is not a formal meeting. This is a general discussion about what we're doing, which has at least allowed that opportunity.
Agreed.
Unfortunately, maybe we should have done this five months ago.
I was just going to say, maybe this should have...